And I'll, I'll work with Dan to, to get you fired up here.
All right, I think we're ready to go. You just let me know, Jennifer, when you're ready to go.
The, the meeting is now yours, Mayor. You may go ahead at any time.
All right, thank you. All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Edina City Council. It is seven oh three P M. Before we call the meeting to order, uh, and following this welcome and letting everybody know that we're back to the virtual world, uh, we got it because we are in the virtual world, we need to let's folks know again, remind them that the meeting is being held electronically to ensure the safety of all residents and staff during the current surge in COVID nineteen cases. All members of the city council, their staff and the presenters are participating from homes or offices. Uh, so before we begin, there's a few things to cover, uh, for those listening in and hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. Don't get in your car at Ten Bello and drive down to City Hall. This is not a hybrid meeting. It's a virtual meeting only. So, uh, in our attempt to commit to, to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters of concern, we've been collecting public data through our voicemail system and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important for you all to know that all public hearing and hearing comments are read before we take action. You do not need to submit the same type of information in any other way if you've done it once. All communications with us are considered equally regardless of the way in which they were submitted. Tonight, there's going to be two times when you can call in, both with respect to community comment. And remember, if you're calling in for community comment, you cannot, uh, address something that's otherwise on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. So that's the, uh, that's the proviso there with respect to community comment. And then we have one public hearing matter this evening as well that you can call in for, and we'll give you advance notice on that. Uh, if you want to call in for either a community comment or the public hearing, call eight hundred three seven four zero two two one, and the conference ID number is five nine eight six three two nine, five nine eight six three two nine. So, uh, the city manager will, uh, time you, you'll have three minutes. He'll let you know when you get up against the three-minute mark, and then you should be wrapping up your comments. So to make sure that, um, let me see here. I think that should cover us. So I'd just say thanks for your patience as we do this, uh, again, virtually online. We did it for over, I think, a year and a half, uh, this way, working remotely. And I think we'll be doing it for, I don't know, maybe a meeting or two. We'll see how it goes. It looks like, uh, COVID may be on the decline according to the Met, uh, Met Council wastewater data that was published today. So regardless, we'll let you know when we come back in on a hybrid basis or live in chambers. Uh, let's call now the meeting to order, and let's do roll call, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Stoughton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Uh, everybody is present. That's terrific. Uh, next is the pledge of allegiance, and I'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a meeting agenda that has been published. I see that Manager Neil has added in item B under, uh, section six, Roman six V. Anything you wanted to comment on there, Manager Neil?
Under item six B?
No, V as in Victor?
V as in Victor. Uh, actually, I was going to propose to add that, uh, Your Honor, to the end of the reports and recommendations, uh, so that I could explain, uh, I could explain it a bit more.
All right, so we might just take it out of, uh, position. Uh, I know that, uh, Councilmember Jackson, uh, wanted to remove, um, an item from the consent agenda, but we'll get there, uh, in a minute. So next, uh, why don't we just, why don't we approve? I think we could approve the meeting agenda as published. So, um, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Still moved. Second.
All right, second by Member Jackson. Councilmember Anderson makes the motion.
Your Honor? Did, uh, did we agree to add this item to the agenda then, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one?
It is on the agenda that I'm looking at that's published on Novus.
Okay.
Actually, if I may say, it actually isn't published.
Okay, it's on the, on the, uh, consent agenda, but, uh, it wasn't noticed up. So we need to add that item. Let's, let's do that. Would you withdraw the motion, Member Anderson? Or, or let's do it this way. Let's, uh, have Member Anderson make an amended, uh, motion to approve the amended agenda, and we'll, we'll move what's shown on, at least this the Novus agenda as six V over to, uh, uh, C on reports and recommendations.
Yes, yes, move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor, uh, with the exception of, uh, six V like Victor, moving resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one to, uh, reports and recommendations.
All right, so that's the, that's your motion, motion to approve the, uh, amended agenda in its totality, not just the consent agenda. All right, good. Is, and then Member Jackson, you'll second that?
I will second that.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the amended agenda as discussed, say aye. Oh, excuse me. I got it. Roll call, please.
Caught yourself. Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoughton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. I was all wired up for that before we went to the amended agenda. Then that messed me up. All right, um, next we have, uh, a community comment. We have, uh, an amended agenda that's been approved. We're going to go to community comment now. And again, folks, uh, if you want to call in, if you want to address the council on a matter of concern to you that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, call eight hundred three seven four zero two two one, and the conference ID number is five nine eight six three two nine, five nine eight six three two nine. Give the operator your name, your street address, and your telephone number. Press star one on your telephone keypad when you'd like to get in the queue to speak, and then this, and then Director Benarot will bring you in to speak to the council. And again, you'll have three minutes. Manager Neil will be the timer, and he'll let you know when you hit the three-minute mark. So let's see if we've got folks, uh, calling in to visit with the council about any matters of concern to them under community comment. Director Benarot, anybody in the queue?
Yes, sir. Uh, tonight, our first caller is Ms. Lori Groats. Operator, will you please unmute, um, Ms. Groats's line? And Ms. Groats, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Lori Groats, five five one three Park Place. I have two questions tonight. How many cases of COVID nineteen have there been among the staff since the beginning of the pandemic? And when was the last positive case? Thirteen days ago on January sixth, I emailed Mr. Jeff Brown, Edina's Community Health Administrator, and asked him those two questions, but, but as of today, I have received no communication from him. Perhaps Manager Neil has this information. He commented during the January seventh special city council meeting that there had been many COVID cases among the firefighters. It would be nice to get an answer this evening rather than having to wait another two weeks for the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Groats. We'll see if, uh, we have that information at hand. Otherwise, we'll just have to wait as we do with our normal cycle. Uh, next, Director Benarot, who else is with us this evening?
Our next caller tonight is Britta Ryan. Operator, will you please unmute Ms. Ryan's line? And Ms. Ryan, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yep, my name is Britta Ryan, and I live at five thirteen John Street.
Go ahead, Ms. Ryan.
All right. Well, thank you, uh, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for being here today. It's been a while since, uh, we've seen or talked to you all, and I hope the year has been kind to you. Um, tonight, I am on the line with my friend and, uh, neighbor Connie Brockway, and we are representing our families and many other families in the Interlock and Park neighborhood. We are here to try and be proactive with some issues that we've experienced in previous years that were exacerbated at the end of last year when a natural sound barrier was removed. Talking to the statistician from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, the amount of noise complaints went up from set, from one to seven prior to the removal of a natural sound barrier. After experiencing multiple nights with loud music from a local facility, we've made the following attempts to kindly address this internally. We requested that the venue redirect the speakers, so the music is not directed at the neighborhood. We've noted that no difference was made after this request, and so we are unsure if it was pursued. We've also called the non-emergency line for Edina Police Department to state our concerns, and Edina's noise ordinances says for a loudspeaker that the loudspeaker operator is allowed to use a maximum volume of sixty-five decibels, that the loudspeaker is not allowed to be used between the hours of ten P M. and seven A M., and that if the noise emanates from a place other than a building or structure, then the measurement shall be made at the point of human activity in the receiving area which is nearest the noise source. Though several of the neighbors have invested in decibel readers when the noise was clearly above sixty-five and asked to share this information with the responding officers, we were told understandably so, that they could not use our devices to measure the noise level. In fact, all the police officers could do after being told there was a permit for the speakers was request the venue to lower the noise. The officers also noted that the decibel readings would have to be reported by an Edina city official with the proper equipment, and Edina does not have a decibel reader to take such readings. We finally contacted Edina's Director of Health and Welfare and asked what recourse we had to stop the venue from blasting music multiple times a week while demonstrably violating Edina's noise pollution ordinance. It was suggested that we ask the city council to create a new ordinance to address the problem. It was explained to us that in effect, the ordinance is unenforceable because as it stands, any person or business with a noise permit can blast music into residential neighborhoods from seven A M. to ten, or seven A M. to ten P M. as often as they'd like, as long as they're willing to pay a thirty dollars fee for a noise permanent, permit. We believe this is an issue that affect, okay, we believe that this is an issue that affects, oh, thank you. We believe that this is an issue that affects all Edina residents, and as such, we ask the city council to drop an enforce, enforceable noise ordinance that limits the number of permits per month that a single entity within five hundred feet of a residential area can be allowed. This will allow venues to still have music, but it will also protect all Edina neighborhoods and residents from constantly being made unwilling audiences to that noise. Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Ryan. Would you send that information into, uh, uh, our city clerk, Sharon Allison, and then we'll take a look at it?
Yep, I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next-
Director Benarot, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mayor Hovland. Our next speaker tonight is Ms. Janie Weston. Operator, will you please unmute Ms. Weston's line? And Ms. Weston, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hello, uh, this is Janie Weston. My address is six one three six Brookview Avenue in Edina. Um, I was very disappointed at the special meeting that you had, um, Friday, the seventh, and, um, your lack of what I thought was, um, not very good reasoning for deciding to not have a mask mandate for the city of Edina. Since then, Hopkins, Minnetoka, Golden Valley, Duluth, Rochester have all instituted their own mask mandates. I do not find your, um, reasoning that, well, if we didn't have a mask, if we had a mask mandate, it wouldn't be followed anyway as solid, um, reasoning based on good science, good medicine, and, um, I would like to see you reconsider your, um, decision to not have a mask mandate because, um, the masking is the least expensive, simplest way that the city of Edina can help to curb the emergence of variants and scientists stress that continuing with public health measures such as masking and getting vaccinated are some of the best things that you can do. And masking is the simplest thing to do. As Michael Olsterholm said in last Sunday's paper, um, he is using the term that we have of, right now, we're in the middle of a viral blizzard, and trying to slow the transmission of COVID remains key. Um, I think you need to ac- hack, access better information on this and bring in people that have to work in the hospitals and healthcare facilities and get some feedback from them on why masking is so important. It's not a temper, uh, not a permanent measure, a temporary measure while we are at such a bad, bad peak in this Omicron variant. Please reconsider this. This is important to our public health. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weston.
Mayor Hovland, I do not have anyone else on the line at this time, uh, who is on the line for community comment. It looks like I have one ready to go for the public hearing. I do recommend that because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, we may wait one minute or so before moving on, just in case other people are trying to get in. My clock shows that it's seven nineteen. I will come back to you at seven twenty or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
All right, that's good advice. I think because there's a slight delay in the broadcast, we should wait a minute or so to see if anybody else calls in. Uh, we're waiting for, uh, Director Benarot. Uh, Member Jackson, was it, uh, six N as in Nancy that you wanted to take off the consent agenda? I just want to make sure.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Hovland, it is now seven twenty, and my operator assures me no one is trying to get through, so I think it's safe for you to move forward with your agenda.
All right, thank you. All right, next matter on the agenda is the, um, city manager's response to the community comments that were made at the prior council meeting. Uh, City Manager Neil, any comments, uh, responses that you wish to make?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. We had one comment at our January fourth, uh, council meeting. It was from Andy Brown, and Andy's question was, what is the status of the replacement of Lewis Park and Strackhour Park shelters? Um, currently, those two park shelters are not included on our, uh, list of projects that are scheduled in the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six, uh, capital improvement program. It's worth noting that we will update that program, uh, this year, but so far those projects, those two projects are not, uh, not part of that, uh, replacement program. There are two, two projects, though, that, uh, that are worth noting, I think, in these parks. One is that we are doing, uh, we have budgeted, it is included in the C I P, uh, for twenty twenty-two, a playground replacement at Lewis Park. So that is included, and that will happen. Uh, in, uh, Strackhour Park, we have, um, funds budgeted for the re, for the update of the master plan for Strackhour Park, and that is what typically, uh, uh, pre, uh, happens before, uh, a, a, a building is replaced. So that's included, uh, for this year's budget. So both of those things will happen, just the buildings are not included yet.
All right, thank you, Manager Neil. At prompt, any comments or inquiries from council members? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Uh, Member Jackson wanted to remove item, uh, Roman six N as in Nancy. Um, is there anyone else on the council wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda with the exception of six N?
So moved.
Second.
Member Pierce moves the approval of the, uh, consent agenda with the exception of six N, which will take up independently. Member Jackson seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. Oh, excuse me. Roll call. Thank you.
Councilmember Stoughton?
Right, smile. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Stoughton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The consent agenda items are approved, adopted in a single motion with the exception of six N, and we will turn now to six N and turn, and also go to Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to highlight the work that, um, the city's Climate Caucus has been doing. It's a group that I've been a member of. Um, we've got members from all over the state, and we're working together to all pass a resolution, um, just before the legislature starts back up again. So we're passing ours tonight. Some people will be passing theirs next week. Um, and as we met, uh, from our different cities' perspectives, we learned that we had a number of things in common, and the, the most moving to me was the fact that cities are already having to adjust to climate change and expend money, um, as we get what more extreme weather, um, as a result of climate change. So there are nineteen cities that are so far, uh, signed up to act. They come from as far away as Grand Marais and Grand Rapids, down to Moorhead or across to Moorhead and down to Red Wing. Um, so we've got, and our bunch of our neighbors are doing, um, resolutions as well. And the point is threefold. One is to, again, document the effect that cities are already seeing about climate change. The second is to share ideas, um, among our cities about things that we can do. And the third is to call on the state and federal government, but especially the state, to, uh, give us the tools we need when we hit up against limits on our power, um, and just, uh, stumbling blocks to making changes. So when we all share these, um, similar stumbling blocks, we are asking the legislature to step up and, and help us out. So that's what we're passing, and, um, I'm very proud of the work that we've all been doing, and just so pleased that it's coming from across the state. So are there any questions?
I thought it was very well crafted.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Member Jackson, would you care to move resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, which is the, uh, support calling for state and federal response to the city's action on climate change?
Yes, I will move resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Member Stoughton, seconds. Member Jackson's motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen. Any further discussion? I'm going to get it right this time. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoughton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen is adopted. Um, and then I just wanted to go quickly to, um, as we usually do, talk a little, uh, bit about the donors. Uh, we had resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, accepting donations on behalf of the city of Edina, and, um, we had some really generous donations that were consolidated for our approval. Uh, donations from the Crime Prevention Fund, uh, where also Member Stoughton serves and, uh, um, over almost fourteen thousand dollars worth of, uh, donations for various, uh, things that were needed in the police department. So thanks to the Crime Prevention Fund. Member Stoughton, I don't know if you wish to comment at all? Uh, okay, very good. Um, go back to the main agenda here. And now we're going to move on to, uh, public hearings. And this matter, Chad Milner has this matter.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to accuse myself from this item because I live in one of the properties proposed to be assessed as, as part of this project.
Yes, certainly. Thank you for that, uh, notification. All right, Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, we're here tonight to hear a public hearing on noise wall improvements, and they're north and south of Highway sixty-two along Highway one sixty-nine. And I'll show a map here that'll show a little better graphic of the project location. So, but first, I'd like to just talk a little bit about Metro, Mindot's Metro Noise Abatement Program. There was legislative, uh, request in the mid nineteen nineties for Mindot to study all the noise areas in the metro area. So they created a long list of projects in the mid nineties, updated that list in the early two thousands, again in two thousand eleven, and again in two thousand sixteen. So as of two thousand sixteen, there is two hundred and thirty-five walls located in the metro area that are on this list, and there's very limited funding. They have one to two million dollars a year. That funds about one to two walls per year. So in my opinion, when we have an opportunity to participate in this program, it really is a, is an opportunity we should take with the list of walls that are potentially out there, uh, on this priority list. And I know they're updating that list again potentially in twenty twenty-two. So the project itself, it, there is this noise wall policy. When you're selected as part of this program, Mindot will fund ninety percent of the project. So that's a great thing for our residents that live along these, uh, interstate highways. Uh, so ninety percent funded by Mindot, ten percent is locally funded, and we choose to do that by special assessments, and we've done that on previous projects. And we assign those assessments to the adjacent properties that benefit, and in this case, it's the benefit of having a noise reduction. I'll show you some graphics that we put together to decide on those benefits here in a little bit. So the project details, they always do twenty-foot walls, and in this case, these are twenty-foot high wood walls. They're located within the Highway one sixty-nine right away, so there's not any additional property that they need to install these walls. The benefit of being part of this program is they design the walls and they administer the walls, uh, projects. So they handle the, the bidding and the contracting and all that stuff. And they have a noise model that they created in the nineties, and it's been updated many times, like I said, and it determines the noise reduction or that noise benefit at these locations. So they studied it originally with the, with the program, and then when a wall gets selected, they go out in the field and put noise sensors out there again and study it again to determine the benefit to these adjacent properties. And those are, that's the data we use to come up with the assessments. So this shows the location. So you can see, I'm calling the, the project, uh, north wall is north of one sixty-nine there along Lincoln Drive next to the Loden. And then there's a, a wall on the south of one sixty-nine. I'm calling that the south wall. Goes from approximately Valley View Road, uh, almost up to Highway sixty-two there. So it's where those red arrows are shown on the north and south labels, where these two different projects are located. So we were contacted in two thousand seventeen about this, about being selected as a potential project for these two areas. So I held a neighborhood meeting in February of two thousand eighteen. We had twenty-six to thirty people attended. We had a nice turnout and shared the details of this project. In April of two thousand eighteen, council approved the resolution that stated that we support Mindot's continued analysis and design in anticipation of construction of these two new noise walls to reduce noise levels. Uh, Mindot's been doing the design here over the past year or so, and then I had some updated cost estimates from them in November, and an update letter went out to all the property owners in December twenty twenty-one. And we're here today, uh, in January twenty twenty-two to have the public hearing, and the official notice went out that met the statutes for that public hearing notice. So the decibel reduction is really that benefit, and that's how the assessments are going to be calculated, and I'll show you the details on that. And that's ten percent of the project cost. So the first couple rows there, that's the noise north wall, and the ten percent portion is about one hundred sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars, and the estimated assessment range is six hundred and fifty dollars, one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per residential equivalent unit or R E U. Now, the south wall is, again, it's a wood wall. The estimated cost at ten percent project cost is three hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred dollars, with estimated assessments starting at two thousand one hundred dollars to five thousand nine hundred dollars per R E U. So just as a comparison there on the right-hand side of this slide, you can see we did the Highway one hundred wall. That was up by Vernon Avenue on the west side. That one was constructed in two thousand seventeen. That one was constructed in two thousand seventeen, and the assessments for that, for the ten percent portion, range from one thousand dollars to three thousand five hundred dollars per REU. So pretty much in line with what we're seeing on these two walls is what we did in two thousand seventeen. So graphically showing the assessments, so this is showing the different tiers. So each one of these projects has a tier one, a tier two, and a tier three. And the colors correspond to the tiers. So the green is tier one. So the green ones have the most decibel reduction for the noise walls. These units here along Lincoln Drive, they have greater than eight decibels reduction with the noise wall, and there are sixteen units within that green shape there. The assessment for that tier one area, the green ones, is one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Tier two is the blue ones. So these two, and then a big portion of the apartments in the Loden also stand to benefit from a noise reduction. We actually had the plans for this project, and MinDOT did their noise analysis for the units in there. The tier two is a five to eight decibel reduction, and there's a hundred and forty-two residential equivalent units in that tier because a hundred and thirty of them of the one eighty-two is from the Loden project. Approximately seventy-two percent of that ten percent cost is paid by the Loden, by that project. Tier three is the pink ones. That one is a decibel reduction of three decibels to five decibels. The human ear can hear a difference in three decibels, so that's kind of the limit of benefit that you can actually hear after a project. There's twenty-three REUs in there, and those are further away from the highway as you would expect, and they're the pink ones labeled here. The estimated assessment for tier three is six hundred and fifty dollars. Moving to the south wall, and again, it's the same colors and the same tiers. So the green ones are tier one. They have greater than eight decibel reduction for the project. There's twenty-six REUs highlighted in green. Those are the ones right adjacent to the highway. And the estimated assessment for tier one in that case is five thousand nine hundred dollars. The blue ones are tier two. That's the five to eight decibel reduction. There's thirty-three, thirty-three REUs. And that assessment is estimated at four thousand dollars per RU. And then tier three is all the pink ones that are remaining, and there's thirty-eight REUs in that section of the assessment, and that assessment is two thousand one hundred dollars. So the project is going to be, if it's approved by council at the next council meeting, they want to construct it this summer and fall. So we would do the assessment hearing in the fall of twenty twenty-three, one year after construction. These assessments are payable over fifteen years. And we have those same payment options that we have during our street reconstruction assessments. You can pay the entire amount upon receiving the bill to avoid additional finance charges. You can pay twenty-five percent, and the balance rolls over to your property taxes. You can roll the entire amount to property taxes. And then if you meet certain income and age requirements, there is a deferral program that you can work with the assessing department to see if you qualify. So they did do some before and after graphics just to see what it looks like. So this left-hand photo is looking out of Langford Drive. So this is the north wall along Lincoln Drive, and then the graphic on the right is what the project would look like after the wall was installed, if you were leaving that neighborhood. Here's another one, still that north wall. You're looking north. Here's northbound one sixty-nine. This is Lincoln Drive. Here's what it will look like after the project. The twenty-foot-high wood wall with concrete plank posts. And then this is the south wall. You're looking from the west side of the highway across to the east. You can see those homes that are right adjacent to the highway. And on the right-hand side graphic, you can see that screening after that noise wall is installed. So staff will be recommending you approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash fifteen. We would ask that you close that public hearing at noon on Monday, January twenty-fourth, and then consider this approval at the February second city council meeting. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
It was a very nice presentation. Thank you. Questions for Director Milner? Okay. All right, let's move on to this is a public.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you. My question for you, Director Milner, is are these two projects severable? Or is it MinDOT's going to do the two walls or not at all?
I believe we could do one or the other. Right now, they're designing both at the exact same time. They're going to, we're going to bring a cooperative agreement back on the February second for consideration also. So yeah, I think the cooperative agreement would list both of them, but if we only did one, I think that would be a possibility for MinDOT. I think we'd lose the opportunity. If we don't do them now, they're going to get pushed down the list. So I think it's a thing we need to consider of, if we do think it's a good location for either one of these or both, to take that opportunity with this project.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Director Milner? This is a public hearing matter, and again, folks, if you want to call in and testify, I'm going to open it up for public testimony now. The number is eight hundred three seven four zero two two one, and the conference ID number is five nine eight six three two nine, five nine eight six three two nine. An operator will get your name and your address, street address, and you'll get, put in the queue. They'll also get your telephone number. And then when you get in the queue, press star one to be able to speak, and Director Bennerott will bring you in to talk to the council. The requested action tonight is that the matter we just discussed, which is embodied in resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen, that it continue for public input until noon on January twenty-fourth, and then the matter would be proposed for continuance or action at the February second city council meeting. So keep that in mind as well. You'll be able to continue to put testimony into the record by, through betteredina.org or by calling City Hall. Eight hundred nine two seven eight eight six one, and Lynette can get you into the correct phone number. So Director Bennerott, do we have anybody waiting in the queue that wishes to testify regarding this proposed project?
Good evening again. We do have someone on the line, and I'm quite certain she plans to testify. As a reminder, if you call in to get in the queue to speak, you have to press star or the asterisk symbol, then the number one on your telephone keypad. That indicates to the operator that you'd like to speak. So again, star, then the number one on your telephone keypad. She's still not moving there, but I'm sure she wants to speak. So let's wait a minute or so before moving on. And I will come back to you at seven forty or when I have a speaker, whichever is first.
Thank you, Director Bennerott.
Okay, our first speaker tonight is Mr. Jay Belzner. Operator, will you please unmute his line? And then, Mr. Belzner, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hello, this is Jay Belzner, and we are at sixty-seven twenty Samuel Road here in Edina.
Go ahead, Mr. Belzner.
Thank you. I would just share that my wife and I have been residents of Samuel Road for eighteen years. And the first year we moved in, we had a new baby, and we moved in in October. And in the summertime, we put in a swing set in the backyard. And because we were the closest house to the highway, we actually had not just noise, but a black dust that would cover the swing set and the toys that we'd have in the backyard. So at that time, we applied for a variance to the city to be allowed to build a ten-foot wall on the highway edge of our backyard. And we did that, and that was very helpful, not just for a bit of noise reduction, but to eliminate the pollutants that were seemingly coming from the highway and covering things in our yard. So I can only imagine that a twenty-foot wall would help that even more, not just from a noise reduction perspective, but also potentially from air pollutants as well. That's our feedback. We appreciate consideration, and we support the project.
Thank you, Mr. Belzner.
Mayor Hovland, members of the council, I do have two other people who have just joined. Neither are on the queue to speak. As a reminder to those who have connected to intercall, once you've connected to get into the queue to speak, I need you to press star, then the number one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number one, not the pound sign or hashtag sign, as that will actually take you out of the queue. So again, asterisk, then the number one. It's seven forty-three now. I'll come back to you when I have a caller in the queue or at the end of that minute, whichever is first.
All right. Thank you, Director Bennerott, and thanks for guiding those folks that are in the waiting room, we'll call it, that may wish to testify.
Yeah, Mayor, and like you mentioned, if they can't get in, they can go to bettertogetheredina.org. We've received a lot of, a lot of forms already from individuals because we put that information on the public notice. So bettertogetheredina.org.
Okay, our next caller tonight is Carolyn Peterson. Operator, will you please unmute Ms. Peterson's line? And Ms. Peterson, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Carolyn Peterson. I live at six nine six zero Langford Court in Edina. I am a resident in one of the buildings that will be assessed for the north wall construction. I had a question rather than testimony that I'm hoping can be answered by Mr. Milner or someone else. In the mailings we received, this assessment is described as a preliminary assessment, and then there's an indication that there's going to be an assessment hearing. I would like an explanation about what it means when you say that these are preliminary assessments, and what will happen at the final hearing is are there going to be additional costs? And is there a maximum amount that we're going to be assessed? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
I do not have any other callers at this time. My clock shows that it's seven forty-five. I'll come back to you at seven forty-six or whenever I have a caller.
Thank you.
The operator tells me we have someone dialing in, so just bear with me just a little longer.
Very good.
Okay, the caller has now connected. So if you would like to testify in this public hearing, please press star, then the number one on your telephone keypad. That's star, then the number one on your telephone keypad. And here we go. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Ms. Nancy Kayes? And Nancy, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record, and I do have your slides ready to go.
Oh, hi. My name is Nancy Kayes, K-A-Y-S. Phone number is six one two five nine zero eighty-five oh one. I have to say I'm confused tonight. There's not only a visual but an audio issue, but I have not seen any discussion relating to the neighborhood that's closer to the entrance to Valley View and the entrance to one sixty-nine.
Ms. Kayes, would you give us your address, please?
Yes, my address is six seven zero nine Sioux, S-I-O-U-X Trail.
Thank you.
So I, and I assume that there was a discussion of information that I received was the map and the discussion regarding the one sixty-nine. And my slides are up here now, but I don't think you've covered that in your discussion yet.
All right, we'll ask him to, I think he, I think he did, but we'll go back and ask him to look at his slides again, Director Milner. Anything else you wish to cover with us?
Well, yes, you want me to continue now? I guess I don't want to disrupt this, but if you want me to start now, I can.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay. So this, I'm sorry to be confused here, but it's been challenging, like I said. I purchased my home at sixty-seven oh nine Sioux Trail twenty-five years ago. And back then, my realtor, the illustrious Kevin Reese, referred to the noise as Edina surf, like the ocean, he said. It's everywhere in Edina, even country club, because all Edina neighborhoods are up to freeways, one hundred, sixty-two, et cetera. Next slide, please. Well, that.
Oops.
Next slide, fine. Well, that was then, and this is now. Can we advance a slide, please? Sorry.
There we go.
So tonight, beyond the noise, I would like to raise the real concern of safety, and that's specifically near the one sixty-nine north ramp off Valley View that's specifically near the 169 North Ram off Valley View with nothing but a chain link fence to protect anyone driving or living along McCauley Trail. Next slide. This is the last slide, I'm sorry. Okay, there we go. Today, there are countless cars and massive trucks racing along 169, well over the speed limit, with nothing but a chain link fence to protect our residents. In fact, I challenged MINDA and I challenged City of Edina to find any stretch of 169, Highway 100, or any other freeway in such close proximity to homes and residents with nothing but a chain link fence to protect them. Trust me, they don't exist. Several years back, I raised this concern to a councilwoman living on Puyt, since retired. Her response was blunt. Well, those are just rental units anyway. Not so. These are young children at play and waiting for buses. They're Edina residents, they're walkers, they're runners, next slide, please, and they're bicyclists on their way to work or in groups, all using McCauley Trail to access Valley View and 169. Just think about those buses, cars full of kids on their way to school in Braemar with no protection but a chain link fence. Next slide.
20 seconds remaining.
I live farther down on John Sioux Trail, closer to Sally Lane. I've assessed the same amount as those living next to McCauley and 169. Nonetheless, I can tell you that noise is a major factor, but so is the safety of our kids. We have needed this wall for years. Let's get it done. Please say yes, the sooner the better, to get the project started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kayes. If you want to send your slides in after the fact, you'll have been, I think, I expect the motion to pass, you'll have until noon on January 24th to get those slides to us or anything else you want to submit.
I will. Thank you so much.
Yes, thanks for coming this evening. Thanks for presenting. All right, Director Benarott.
I do not have anyone else on the line at this time, and I'm pretty confident we have given the people enough time to call in, so you can move forward with your agenda if you'd like.
All right. Let's go back to Director Milner and I think several benefits from the sound walls we've done in the past, not only the noise and air pollutants that Jay Belcher was talking about, but I think also the visuals are important to people. If you don't see that traffic, it has a, has a profound effect on quality of life, too. Let's talk about that assessment process for Carolyn Peterson.
Yeah, Mayor.
Just so she understands the, how the process works.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. So we set a preliminary. You, if you approve this project on February 2nd, you'll be setting a preliminary assessment. So that'll be filed with the properties, so if there's any property sales, they know there's a pending assessment. We set that assessment amount with this project based on estimates from MINDA with some contingency in there. They're going to go out for bids in March, and then we'll know a much better, a much more solid number at that point. If those bids come back within reason of these numbers, we'll continue to move forward. If they come in way higher than this, then I'd probably notify the residents again and come back to the city council to have a broader discussion. But those estimates have been real good in the past. We anticipate them being good in the future, and we hope that when we come back in '23 that the bids came in favorably and these assessments are a little lower than what we estimated. So there is some contingency in there, but there isn't a max, like she had mentioned. It's, it's an estimate. We can go up, we can go down, but we'll review that when the bids come in. And if they're in line with these, typically, we just move the project forward until the assessment hearing, one year after construction.
And you'd be coming back to the council for that approval?
For that final assessment approval, yep, one year after the project, so you have one more time to, to look at these assessments.
All right. Very good. Thank you. And then, Ms. Kayes, you had the one slide, I think, that showed the south sound wall along McCauley Trail, and I, I was trying to look at it on the screen, too, but it seemed to me like it did cover that Sioux Trail entrance off McCauley Trail.
It did, yeah. It goes from Valley View Road, so basically where the homes start, you know, her comments about protecting the homes and the people that live there. It starts right at Valley View Road and goes just past West Trail, actually outlets on McCauley, but Apache Road does not, but it goes past the Apache Road cul-de-sac. So it connects to that other 10-foot-high wall that the residents paid for about 20 years ago, along McCauley Trail there. So it does a good portion. It will be crash-rated, so her comments and concerns about cars coming through that chain link fence, it won't be able to anymore. It'll be a crash-rated wall, 20 feet tall.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions from council members or Director Milner based on the public testimony that we heard at this point in time? All right. The action that's been requested by Director Milner is that we, with respect to Resolution 2022-15, which is a proposed noise wall improvement project embodied in Essay 21 and Essay 22, that we keep the matter open for public testimony until June, or it's not June, until noon on January 24th, and continue the action on the item to the February 2nd city council meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Or Jackson moves? And for Pierce seconds, that we leave this matter open for public testimony until noon on January 24th, 2022, and then continue the action on Resolution 2022-15 to the February 2nd city council meeting. Any further discussion? All right. Roll call, please. Ms. Alice, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye.
Motion passes. The matter will be held open for further public input until noon on January 24th, 2022, and then we will take it up for action at the February 2nd, 2022 city council meeting. Thank you, Director Milner, for your good work. All right. We've got now two matters, or three matters, actually, in the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. The first matter is Ordinance 2022-01 that we've been working on for a bit. Staff made edits to the recommendations made by the city council to staff on January 4th, 2022. Those edits were highlighted in the attached proposed ordinance amendment. And Director Teague, do you want to walk through those changes?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Okay, so just quickly, the first edit was adding back in, under the building coverage requirement, the 50-square-foot allowance for single-family homes. So what's added back here is overhangs and eaves, not supported by posts. When we get a survey in, when we're reviewing building coverage, it just shows the walls, so any overhangs are not included. So that was also added back in. Second part, this was the, this was caught by councilmember Jackson, is in regard to the one-foot rule, where we had the two conditions that needed to be met for a tear-down and rebuild, and that was changing previously. It had said the low water elevation, and we've corrected that to be the high-water elevation. And the third edit is in regard to setbacks in the, in the South Dale District. This was recommended by councilmember Staunton to clean up this language so it's consistent with the way we regulate setbacks for, along France and York. So you can see the language is consistent with Vision A above. So again, to reiterate, it, I understand that the council's been receiving some feedback still, that there's, that it's not clear out in the public that there seems to be a misunderstanding that we're amending the setback requirements. They stay the same here, we're just clarifying how we're measuring and the definition section. So setbacks along France and York continue to be 50 feet back from the building to the face of a curb, and all other streets, essentially east-west streets, it's a 30-foot setback. But with that, staff recommends that you grant second reading of the ordinance as presented this evening.
Questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out, several people have made comments about this conflicting with the Climate Action Plan, and I've had conversations with both Director Teague and with our sustainability coordinator, Grace Hancock. And first of all, this isn't a change, it's just fixing the definitions. And secondly, it's, the existing ordinance is completely in alliance with the Climate Action Plan. The Climate Action Plan envisions walkability, creating these green boulevards, and, and trying to get people out in a green space that we can enjoy. So I just wanted to make that clear, that the Climate Action Plan was written with these plans in mind, and they're consistent together, and it's actually, will make the walking experience much greener than it is now. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Member Jackson, would you care to move the granting of second reading of Ordinance 2022-01?
Still moved.
There a second?
Second.
That member Pierce or member Anderson? Member Anderson? Thank you. Any further discussion with regard to the potential approval of second reading on Ordinance 2022-01?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Pierce?
We definitely have had a lot of feedback on this, and I would say it's still not clear. And so the, a, the, and member Jackson mentioned some of this, where it does seem like there are residents who feel like what we're voting on tonight is to actually change the setbacks, which we aren't, and so we covered that. And I talked to Director Teague about that earlier this week. And so I do think it's important for us to, I, I made the comment the last time, that we do as, we do what we can to just make sure people understand what this is about. I am in support of it. I mentioned that I've spent the time to understand it with Director Teague, but I had two phone calls where I was trying to walk through, no, we're not changing setbacks. And so what I would offer is if residents believe that the setbacks that are currently in the ordinance are, they should be reduced, then there is a process that we can go through with the planning commission to go back and look at that and adjust those setbacks. But that's actually not what we're doing tonight. And so I think it would be incumbent on us to take that feedback that we've received and, and have the, the planning commission review that feedback. And then if we believe that we should take an action, and I think it should go through the process of being assessed as to whether or not we should actually adjust the setbacks. But with the, I do support the motion as stated tonight. I would just add that I would like for city staff to take the feedback that we've received and ensure that that gets reviewed, and if residents feel like we should adjust those setbacks, it should go through the planning commission process.
Thank you, member Pierce. Yeah, I, I, I think it would be beneficial if we could have some kind of a, a lay language, plain language document that we, that we produce that tells the story a little bit more cleanly than the, the technical sort of work that we're done here, that we've done here, that we're proposing to do with this ordinance, just to make sure people understand it. I think Director Teague had some of that language in his presentation when we were doing first reading. So you might think about posting something up on the website about the changes that were made or were not made, so that people are, are clear that it is, that we're, we're very sensitive to the Climate Action Plan, we want to make sure that these documents are consistent. We believe they are consistent, but these are just language cleanups that were necessary. So I think you're all making excellent points on this. Any further comments? Okay. We've got a motion to second to grant second reading of Ordinance 2022-01. Hearing no further comments or seeing no one asking to inquire further, roll call, please, with respect to the motion as stated.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Ordinance 2022-01 is approved, and the change is there, too. All right. Let's move on to Resolution 2022-09, which is the second item in the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and that deals with the potential adoption of that resolution, which would approve the preliminary and final plat for 5,300 Kelsey Terrace, basically dividing that property into two lots. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As we went through the presentation last week, this is a somewhat unique for Edina that we actually have a subdivision here that meets our city codes. There's no variances being requested. It's simply re-establishing the original plat, which was platted for two lots, but however, only one was built. Planning Commission recommended approval on this unanimously. There wasn't any neighborhood opposition, and with that, staff would recommend that you approve the preliminary and final plat this evening. Should you have any questions? The applicant, Carol Lansing, and the property owner, Jesse Mayer, no, I'm sorry, Kareem Rada, Rita, is on the line to answer any questions, if you have any.
All right. Any questions from councilmembers for Ms. Lansing or the property owner? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-09, which would approve the preliminary and final plat for 5,300 Kelsey Terrace?
Still moved.
All right. Member Pierce moves. Member Jackson seconds.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
The action requested is adopted. Resolution 2022-09 is approved, and that approves the preliminary and final plat for 5,300 Kelsey Terrace. Thanks to the owner and thanks to her attorney, Carol Lansing, for being available, both to the planning commission and the council. All right. And now we're going to go to a matter that Manager Neal had to put together today, and that is potential approval of Resolution 2022-21, which would support the authority to impose a local option sales tax for specific capital improvements. This is a, I guess, an increase in the request that we made to the legislature, and that was approved by the legislature last year. And I'll turn it now over to Manager Neal, who is doing this work at the request of our legislative delegation, specifically our state representative, Heather Edelson. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, Representative Edelson asked me if to ask the council if you would adopt this resolution. You adopted a, a very similar resolution in January of 2021, which really was the, the kickoff to getting the authorization last year to have the referendum later this year for local option sales tax. What this resolution specifically does tonight is, is, is establishes the, the new request that we have, that we've already discussed with councilmembers and already discussed with our legislative delegation, that allows us to collect and to spend on Braemar Arena the, the remaining dollars that are included in the, in the ask that we've already had approved from them. So what we're asking for is not to include, not to increase the rate that's going to be proposed, not to increase the duration, but just to be able to collect the additional dollars that will be created through the local option sales tax and devote them to this, this particular project. through the local option sales tax and devote them to this, this particular project. So this resolution's been, was modified from what you did last year to specifically identify the Braemar Park master plan, Braemar Arena, additional, additional expenditures. And that's what this accomplishes. So it's a, it's a little bit more than a formality, but it's necessary to get it into the House Tax Committee flow. They have a deadline of January 31st to receive this information. So we want to put it in front of you and hopefully get an approval tonight so that we can meet that deadline.
All right, good. Good explanation. Thank you. Questions for Manager Neil, with regard to the proposed resolution? All right, Manager Neil, I noticed one little typo in the last full paragraph before the whereas clause. The first line, the improvements to the 500 acres of, of, I think it should be of, or to Braemar Park.
Got it.
Got it? Yeah, of Braemar Park, I think. All right. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution, 2022-21?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Member Anderson. There a second?
Second.
Second.
Member Staunton seconds? We're out of rhythm here. All right, we got a motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Staunton, to adopt Resolution 2022-21, which would support the authority of the city to impose a local option sales tax to specifically fund some capital improvement projects that provide regional, and indeed broad regional benefit. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Resolution 2022-21 is adopted. Thank you. Thank you, Manager Neil, for putting that together on short notice. It was well done. All right, we are now moving on, moving on to correspondence. Anything that has come in this evening that we need to be mindful of?
No.
All right. And then moving on to aviation noise update. I don't have anything. I didn't see anything from former council member Brindle. Manager Neil, anything?
Yes, actually, I did receive a question from our representative Brindle, and it was whether or not we would like to host a noise oversight committee meeting in 2022 or 2023. I said we would, if we can meet live, and so she's, she's trying to put that together for us.
All right. Very good. Thank you. I was just thinking about being part of the, the TAB meeting. Earlier this afternoon, we had a report out from the MAC, and all the activity out there. They're just going through some labor negotiations out there with a nonessential unit, which is all the Teamsters, which is a group that takes care of all the snow plowing at the airport. And so they had authorized a strike, and I think they're close to cutting a deal with them if they haven't already done so, reaching an agreement. So that's another piece of information from the airport. See if there was anything else. I think that was it. That was one of the more important pieces of information out there. All right. And then on to mayor and council comments. Councilmember Pierce, do you want to lead us off, please?
Just, thanks, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment. I really just wanted to, to recognize the residents. I have had a lot of great conversations over the past couple of weeks, some about the mask mandate, and some, we just talked about the ordinance. And what I have found is that I appreciate when people reach out in a way to exchange perspectives. And I've felt with many of them, I have, have learned, I've grown, I've understood different perspectives, and I definitely appreciate that. And I just want to encourage people to continue to do that. When you reach out, and there's mutual respect for what we're doing, and the fact that residents are trying to, to share different perspectives, whenever we can do that, I think it makes the process better, and we are, our community is richer for it. And so for those of you who have reached out in that way, thank you. And I hope that that continues. Other than that, that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Staunton?
Nothing from me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Member Anderson?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went to the Winter Ice Festival at Centennial Lakes over the, on Sunday afternoon, and it was just a wonderful event. It was great to see people out skating, and there were really experienced skaters and brand-new skaters. And I just am always amazed at what a jewel Centennial Lakes facility is. And just getting out and walking around and getting the fresh air and being together was, was wonderful. So I hope everybody who went enjoyed themselves as much as I did, and I just love Centennial Lakes. So thanks for everybody who put it on.
All right, very good. Well, as you all know, I'm on at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and the timing, it was, it was, I think, nice to be able to participate in the council meeting. You always worry about missing a council meeting. And when we decided to switch over to virtual meetings on a short-term basis, it worked out really well. And I just wanted to let folks know that we've got some really interesting speakers coming up tomorrow. We've got the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, so I expect we'll hear something about housing affordability. The U.S. Small Business Administration Administrator is going to be here tomorrow. And then Thursday morning, we've got Marty Walsh, the head of the Department of Labor, the Secretary of Labor coming, former mayor of Boston. And then as we move through the rest of the week, only a few days left, Pete Buttigieg will be here to talk about transportation infrastructure on Thursday. And then on Thursday afternoon, let's see, we got the, the head of the Department of Homeland Security, and then Nancy Pelosi coming, well as Kevin McCarthy from the House, and then President Biden will be here Friday, along with Merrick Garland, the Attorney General. So we should, I have some interesting things to report out to all of you on as a result of the meeting. I think the U.S. Conference of Mayors did an extraordinary job getting a speaker lineup for us here. We're getting tested daily. We had to prove, provide proof of vaccination to be able to come out, and then we're getting tested daily. So I've been tested tonight before the meeting for Thursday, so I've got my little wristband for Thursday, and a bit tested again tomorrow night. So a few more interesting days yet to go here, but I would really please be able to participate in the city council meeting this evening. So thanks to all of you. And then, Manager Neil, I'd just let you all know that Manager Neil and I are visiting with the school district too, about a couple of things that are mask-related and fit within the parameters of our, of the resolution that we did pass a couple of weeks ago. So I think that's it for me. Manager Neil, you had a couple of things on your list, budget work plan, recent equity work plan update, and maybe some other things as well.
I, I, thank you, Your Honor, I do. And those two things, I, I wasn't planning to speak on. They're, they're just included in the packet under my report.
Oh, okay.
But I do have two things that I do want to speak on. One, one is to follow up from the January 7 special meeting. You gave staff some direction at that meeting. I want to tell you what, what has happened since then. First of all, you asked staff if we could go about putting our hands on a great number of masks, KN95 masks. And we were able to do that with our partners in Bloomington Public Health, City of Bloomington and City of Richfield. We have asked to be part of the distribution from the state, and we've asked for 75,000 masks. And it looks like we will get something closer to 50,000 masks that we will have to, that will split up among the three cities. And we're expecting to receive those the first week of February. That's not the end of our, of our kind of community mask quest, but we are continuing to look for some more sources, and not, not just for the community, but also for employees as well. And we will start as soon as we can to talk about how we would distribute those masks in the community as well. You also asked us to prepare a booster clinic for the community, and that booster clinic has been scheduled for Friday, January 28th, from 2:00 to 7:00 at Braemar Clubhouse. Braemar Clubhouse offers us the, the parking fields and the flow for one of these events to work pretty well. So not only do we have the, the material, the boosters themselves, but we've got the people and the location lined up for that day. So we think that's going to work well. We have, will have enough, enough booster on hand to do 200 boosters that day, or 200 people. So there will be, there will be an appointment process online. So more information about that will be coming up quickly. If, if there's additional demand for this kind of clinic, we will, we will schedule, we'll do our best to work with Bloomington Public Health to schedule another one. The other item that I can report on is signage. You asked staff to be, to post signage about encouraging mask use around different city facilities, and we were able to do that as well. Our masks, our, our mask signage is, is all over our different facilities, and we've received some feedback on that already. So that's some of the follow-up from, from the January 7th meeting. The only other thing that I have was just to tell you how pleased we are that we, we have a project in the governor's bonding bill proposal. You know, that's not the end of the line. That's a good place to start, but, but the allocation that Governor Walz has included in his bonding bill of $10 million for our Fire Station 2 project, or the Community Health and Safety Center project, is really a, a good start for that project. And we're optimistic that we can follow that all the way through to an approval at some time in May likely. So that's, that's all I've got for, for my report tonight. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. I thought Member Pierce raised a really interesting issue, and that is that the notion that we have respectful dialogue, no matter who we're visiting with. And I know that when we, we spent on January 7th, well over two hours trying to determine whether to impose a mask mandate or take a different pathway, it was well thought through, and we got some affirmative comments from people on it. But there were also some that we got where we were accused of being things like gutless, and weak, and that's no decision. And the people are passionate about, about the masking. But I, I thought that this council did an extraordinary job talking through all of the issues and coming to a decision. And though there may be those that may disagree with us out in the community, it's no way to have a dialogue, in my opinion, or to be influential with somebody to be using language like that, especially when, day in, day out, I think city councils across the United States, and I know ours in particular, are doing some very, very difficult work. And that was reinforced over what I've, in what I've heard today from so many federal officials that where the rubber met the road on these problems with COVID and with crime, it sets the city level. And it's city councils all over America that are trying to deal with these problems. It's the front line, and we're making tough decisions all the time. We've got a great council that's thinking things through very, very carefully before we make decisions. And so for those that are out there that are going to probably write to us again, I would encourage you to be respectful in all ways of everybody in the community. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Got a motion second to adjourn the city council meeting for this 19th day of January 2022? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks. Will you stand adjourned? Then I'll see you, see you at home.